Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tim Hunt is the pastor at Oak Crest Church of Christ. I'll ask him to lead us in the invocation and afterwards I'll ask Councilman Larry McAtee to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Holy Father, the one who's the giver of all, we approach your holy throne today. We approach broken, we approach discouraged at times, but nonetheless we approach you because it's only from you that we can find strength to carry on. We're mindful this morning that the threats have not waned. We're mindful this morning that dangers have not dissipated. We're reminded this morning, oh Father, that the power to undo us is loose. And yet we are not discouraged. There are parts of us that curse the darkness and seek the light. And Father, we pray that we might allow your candle to be lit in our heart, that we might seek your presence, that we might allow you room. Because we know, Holy Father, it is better to light the candle than to curse the darkness. And so as those who are in Boston and around the nation mourn, and as we plan for our upcoming events, may your light shine. Oh yes, Holy Father, may your light shine in Oklahoma City. May your light shine in the planning. May your light shine in execution of justice and what is right. And Father, as we approach your throne, we don't ask for us alone, but we ask that your light might shine in Boston, that your light might shine in New York City, that your light might shine in Rio de Janeiro, in Tianan Taiwan, in Taipei, and around the globe. Because when you shine, our candles are lit and the world becomes a brighter place through Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Mr. Feing, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One week from today, the Festival of the Arts starts in Oklahoma City and we have four of our most prominent citizens to come forward to lead us through this process this morning and talk about Festival of the Arts Week. Peter DeLeese, as always, Linda Whittaker, Stacy Hawthorne, and Daniel Adams are here. Would you all come forward? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the 14th Annual Festival of the Arts, produced by the Arts Council Oklahoma City, will officially open on Tuesday, April 23rd, for six days of exciting visual and performing arts activities. And whereas the Festival of Arts is recognized nationally as one of the most spectacular, fine arts festivals in America, featuring more than 170 visual artists, continuous live entertainment on four outdoor stages, art activities for all ages, and delicious festival food. Whereas Linda Whittington and Daniel Adams, the 2013 festival co-chairs, lead a team of more than 5,000 volunteers who donate their time, talents, resources, and energies to produce a spectacular celebration of the arts for the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas the Festival of the Arts is an annual springtime event which is free to the public and made possible through the generous support of civic and business leaders and individuals who embrace the arts. Proceeds from the festival allow the Arts Council of Oklahoma City to continue to expand its events, arts programming, arts education programs, and cultural art facilities for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 23rd through 28th as the 47th Annual Festival of the Arts Week in Oklahoma City. And he asks all citizens to join in honoring the Arts Council of Oklahoma City, the volunteers, and the artists who take part in this event.
Let's show our appreciation and support for the arts. I know so much preparation's gone into this, Whittington. What do we need to do now?
We need to be ready to appear on April 23rd at 11:00 in the morning. We will have opening ceremonies and we have the special lunch for all city council that we invite all of you to please come. We invite the citizenry to come out and share the 144 visual arts, enjoy the food, in our new culinary arts demonstration area.
So cool. How are the volunteers coming along?
Everything is shaping up. We can always use volunteers and if you would love to come out and work a shift, call the Arts Council, 270-4848.
All right, let's show our appreciation one more time. And I guess this is the poster and they have brought one by. We'll display it in the mayor's office. Thank you all very much. In fact, I'll pass it to council so they can look at it themselves. Thank you all and good luck. It is also National Telecommunications Week. David Shute, Sylvia Lewis, Chris Powell, Josh Elmore, Jamie Welch. Looks like everybody's here. Come on up. I'll ask the clerk to read this proclamation as we get settled.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Oklahoma City Emergency Communications Center. Public safety dispatchers and call takers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call takers of the Oklahoma City Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each public safety dispatcher and call taker has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the last year. And whereas public safety dispatchers and call takers are at their best helping others through the worst. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call takers save and change lives, one call at a time. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 14th through 20th as National Telecommunications Week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation again. David, I know this is just a small group representing an even larger group involved in the telecommunications.
It is, Mayor, and we're so thankful for the support we have from the council and your office and of course the chief. And we have great resources there, but our most valued resource are our employees. Probably the most recent example I could give is last night during the earthquakes overnight. They took almost 300 calls in a 30-minute time period. So when we're asleep and we feel safe in our homes, they're diligent at work and we can feel good about that. Thank you so much.
Great example. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks again. I unexpectedly woke up at 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning and didn't know why. And I woke up this morning finally at 6:00 and quickly during the earthquakes. I'm wondering if that's what jostled me out of my slumber in the middle of the evening. Any damage that we know of, Jim?
Nothing major.
Okay. Good news. We'll call the meeting to order now. We'll start with a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion on item 3A through E. These are appointments to a variety of city boards and commissions. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're onto item 4. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 9th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 2nd. Comments or questions about the Journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now let's see. Oh, we're under request for uncontested continuances. Jim, anything here?
Just a couple. On page 5 on the consent docket, page 5, under item 6I1 and 2, 6I1 and 2, the applicant requests a continuance of this item till April 23rd. Again, that's 6I1 and 2. And then on page 13, under unsecured, item 8H1F, page 13, 8H1F, 800 North Warren, whereas that be stricken, the owner has secured. And that's all this morning.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll assess the council meeting convening as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. I think there are nine items. We have a motion and a second. John, you have a comment?
Yes, I have a question as it relates to item C. When will the project be completed and is there a maximum amount on the engineering fees? And again, that is item C.
Yeah, so item C is a softball Hall of Fame complex. There's a multi-phase project out there. There's a small project we did prior to this year's softball Hall of Fame, a pad that was done. This is for the next two phases, actually, that will be built over the next two years. I think the prices on that were $7 million construction, somewhere along those, on those two phases. And then there's ultimately a long-term phase, it'll be a future phase to do some expansion of the seating out in the area. So it's a multi-phase and we're negotiating with the NCAA right now that if we were to be successful in accomplishing these phases of construction or commitments to do that, they will give us a longer-term agreement for the college road series out there. And so I'm not trying to answer all your questions, so was there?
The other one, is there a maximum fee placed on the engineering fees?
Well, this is the fee. It's negotiated based upon the scope of work and this is about an 8% fee on that. Those are negotiated on a case-by-case basis. We don't bid fees for engineering and architectural services. We do qualified base selection and then based upon that, we negotiate the fees based upon the scope of work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, manager. Any other comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convening as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items. Comment on item A? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA convening as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, A as Alpha, M as Montreal, E Tango Point One.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to mention 6W.
And Mayor, sorry, this will go out.
Okay. And T, did you say T, Pat? He did.
T Point One.
Okay, so I'd say T2 and T3. All right, Pat, you want to get started with A?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. On the very last sentence on the first page, it says, "After careful evaluation of the updated pricing, staff determined the increase to be reasonable." What percentage increase did we think was reasonable? And what was the basis for the increased pricing?
Amy, can you answer that on item A?
What was the question? The question was on item 6A. The very last sentence says, "After careful evaluation of the updated pricing, staff determined the increase to be reasonable." And what percentage increase did we think was reasonable and what was the basis for the increased pricing?
I want to say it was like a 1% increase on certain line items, but this is a line item cost bid, so each year they submit, you know, an updated price list. So there were slight increases and we just look at it to see if we rebid it, if we think that we'll get a lower price.
And what was the basis of the price increase? Just cost, materials?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Pat, item M.
Item M is a new fire station and I wondered if we've got the people, firefighters, already on board for this, or are we going to have to hire some more firefighters?
This station, we're going to relocate an engine from Station 1 for this station.
Okay. And item T Point One, I just was curious as to when this work might be done?
Eric, T1 is Northwestern from 164th to 178th.
I was hoping to have some better notes for this this morning, but I'll get that answered to you, Mr. Councilman, just before the meeting's over. I've got, the design is underway and I just need to get a timeline for you, but I'll get that.
You might show the information with John also because it's Western is the dividing line between the two wards.
I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, Meg, item W.
Yes, just briefly, Clay Kimker and Chloe Schalk with Devon here today and I just wanted to recognize this agreement with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust and the Devon headquarters. We are accepting a contribution of just shy of $4 million in public improvements that were part of Project 180. I really just wanted to express my gratitude for all the amazing work that was done, but particularly these add-ons that have contributed so much to that streetscape and fabric downtown. So Clay, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything or, okay, great, well, thank you.
I will point out that as a partner and I really do look at Devon as a partner as we're going through these improvements, that we've, they've been very, very involved in all of 180. They've been very generous on the improvements that they've made and I think that obviously the quality of their building and hopefully we're matching it with some of the quality of the street improvements around it is going to be an instrumental change in downtown forever.
Ed, item T2 and T3.
Eric, a couple of questions. We've talked on a number of occasions about the unlisted fund, unlisted funds from the 2007 Geo bond being depleted and we're going to spend on T2 and T3 another $2 million plus from unlisted funds on these two projects. Do you have a sense of the total amount spent from unlisted funds and how much is left?
Yeah, we, the unlisted funds that we discussed several weeks ago and the status of those is such that we have expended more of the unlisted than the percentage completed of the listed bond projects. So one of the items that you'll find here on T3 is actually a listed bond project and one of the purposes of the unlisted is to provide the contingency projects like that. T2 is a little bit different. There are projects that are unlisted that come up from time to time. This happens to be in agreement with ODOT on item T2 that we previously entered into. It's an overage of costs that we were anticipating and so this was a planned cost as opposed to an unplanned cost to upgrade the tunnel at Robinson as part of the MAPS 3 park, to put an arched tunnel in in lieu of just a square box for pedestrian access and aesthetics. So I would tell you that as we look at unlisted funds going forward, we're very prudent, making sure that the recommendations that we bring to you as the city council are ones that are for completing the listed bond projects as the first priority, second priority being for projects that come up between now and the next bond issue that need to be completed as partnerships either with ODOT, other counties, other agencies.
So is this, is this for the park or is this part of our agreement with ODOT for the boulevard construction?
Both. So it's actually access to the park, but it's in the vicinity of the new Interstate 40. So if you were to go south of Robinson today, you'll see that that tunnel has already been installed. There's an arched tunnel that accesses the park from Robinson Avenue. Excuse me, underneath Robinson Avenue. You can't actually get to it from Robinson because it's elevated at that location.
So could you, could you have used MAPS 3 funds for this? If it's for the park?
There was a share of MAPS 3 funds that was used for this. So this is the part that is from city funds. There was already a MAPS contribution made probably 18 to 20 months ago that the advisory board authorized, I think about $190,000 that came from MAPS funds. This is the city portion of that work, but the MAPS portion was already previously addressed.
On T3, Boyd, can you show that? Well, I guess we're going to have to bring that, the projection down. I want to talk about T3. This is a widening of Choctaw Road between Southeast 44th Street to Southeast 59th Street. Do you know, do you know the vehicle per day counts on this street?
I don't know them, but I can get them.
Do you know if it would be more or less than 10,000 vehicles per day?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be happy to get that. It would just take a few minutes. It's in our GIS system.
So that's, that to me is a answer that we should know. I mean, and I've brought this up several times, that two lanes of traffic should be able to handle 10,000 vehicle per day counts. And if we're widening streets with significantly less than 10,000 vehicle per day counts, we should know why or we should have some sense of why we're doing that. And I've been certainly critical of the more than $50 million that we've spent in Pass Ward on 178th Street, 192nd Street, just to show that I'm an equal opportunity critiquer. I wanted to pick on Pete's Ward. But this, this is what, this is the street that we're going to widen. You can see that there's very, very little residential density on this street. Originally, we thought it was going to cost about $3.4 million, so now it's going to cost more than 50% more than that. It's going to cost about $5 million.
That's correct.
Okay. Boyd, can you show the next slide? And this, this is what this street looks like that we're widening at a cost of $5 million. I would have, well, Kenny left, because Kenny really had a question for Kenny. But I'll ask you, I mean, do you, if it's a listed, this is a listed project on the 2007 Geo bond, so it was on the ballot?
Yes.
So we have an obligation, it's your understanding, we have an obligation to, to do that no matter what?
That's my understanding, yes.
What if, just to throw out a preposterous number, just for, let's say that it came in at $10 million, would we still have to do it then?
You know, I think one of the things that we're very active when we do the engineering on projects like this one, it's unfortunate that on this particular project, additional drainage requirements that were unknown at the time are being imposed. So there are some, there are some costs that were unforeseen that are related to the increases. As you showed the aerial map, there's a pretty major drainage way that runs through this particular site that needs to be addressed properly. Had that been known in 2007, obviously the cost estimate would have been higher than that. But I would tell you that that is another reason that we use the unlisted funds. There's always a need for contingency. There's always a need for unknowns and we'll find them virtually on any project that we start. We try to mitigate those and make them as small as possible, but if the project estimate was excessive, we would look at value engineering opportunities. I would tell you that there's some opportunities for us like on streetscapes where we can look at different landscaping if we have perhaps a streetscape project that comes in over budget. We can look at different hardscaping options. On sections like this, there are different things we can do at the intersections. The intersections can sometimes be quite expensive. When it comes to drainage, there are some minimum standards that have to be met to ensure that the road doesn't flood, that we protect private and public property, and so those are some of the things that have caused the cost to increase on this one.
Well, I would just opine again that I think this is a tremendous misallocation and squandering of resources. I think that we don't even know what the vehicle per day counts are and whether this is justified. Imagine that we had spent $5 million on a streetscape on, I mean, if we're staying in Ward 4, something like Southeast 29th that has 400 businesses between Shields and May. One thing I liked from the placemaking conference in Norman was the idea that you invest in multiple placemaking, multiple areas throughout the cities, maybe eight to 10, where you invest in streetscapes. Imagine the economic development and economic return that would have occurred if we had spent $5 million on a streetscape on, say, 29th as opposed to this allocation of $5 million. It's just, I'm just opining, it's just rhetorical, but Kenny, I just want to ask on these bonds, what the legal obligation is to proceed when, when the actual cost comes in so much higher than the estimate? So this was estimated at $3.4 million, it's more than 50% higher, it's going to cost about $5 million. Let's say it costs $10 million or $15 million, do you still have a legal obligation to proceed?
Yes, under the Bond Issue Proceeds Act, you have to spend at least 85% of the money allocated to a specific project on that project unless it can be completed for less. If it can be completed for less than 85% of that total amount, then those are surplus funds, but you do have to spend at least 85% on that project.
But what if it costs more? What if it costs substantially more, two, three, four times more? You still have to find the funds somewhere to make sure, you have to finish that no matter what?
Either that or you're going to have to scale down your project and just do what you have the funds for or find the money somewhere else.
You could scale it back and not do the whole road and keep it on the budget. That was your choice.
Yeah, and then you would still fulfill your legal obligation to the voters.
Right.
You could scale it down and do...
As long as you're spending the, you've got them all month, 85% of it.
Correct. So you could scale down this to keep it at $3.4 million if you, if you wanted to.
Right. But we can't complete the project, so you're going to have a, you're going to, how many miles is it, Eric?
It's one.
Just one?
This is one mile.
Yeah, so you'd have three quarters of a mile of road and a half mile of road for something like that.
But there's nothing that allows you to not do the project. You're...
Unless it's like physically impossible to do the project, just economically, you know, the economic impact of the cost going up doesn't give you an excuse for not. You still have to spend 85% of the money allocated to that project on the project.
Surely there must be a mechanism. Could you, I'm not saying you would on something this small, but could you return it to the voter?
You could return it to the voters. There's an option to go to district court and try to get the court to cancel a project, but that's never been done and, but you basically, is this a resurfacing project or whatever the...
A widening, a street widening.
Widening, then you just do what you have the money for. If you don't, if you can't find the additional funds, you'd spend the money on whatever you can do that's within that project.
I'd like to make a quick comment on this. I'm getting involved in the financing part of it because I don't understand that always, but the disruption that our citizens suffer is going to be much easier to deal with on a road before it gets built up around and afterwards. We have a project on May Avenue where it's going on and on and we've disrupted the commercial aspects there. We disrupted the use of the citizens for that, of that road. And we, there's a considerable advantage doing these prior to the time the development occurs rather than afterwards. And I, it's, it's hard to quantify how much that's worth, but I know that we've had several projects in Ward 8 where the disruption has been significant and we've had to deal with this for a long time. Better if we could have done it earlier.
Meg?
Well, I was just going to say, I wasn't here, Pete, when the bond issue was put together in 2007, but I have to believe that the voters in Ward 7, or in Ward 4, were interested in this project, which is why it was included in the issue. So we're responding to citizen requests to some large extent.
Well, there's a little bit more. To put this project in historical context, this is part, this is just one mile out of two or three miles that were separately shown in the, in the bond issue. I believe that's right. Is that right, is that right, Eric?
I believe that's correct.
There are two or three specific miles that are shown that, that approach that intersection of I-240 and Choctaw Road.
The answer, the answer is yes. We actually have several ODOT projects that I'm receiving input from staff that are also coordinated with this. There's some ODOT enhancements at the interchange that are occurring. The traffic counts, depending on which mile that we're looking at, are between 5,500 and 7,500 currently today. But with the ODOT anticipated work at the interchanges with their plans, we're coordinating the work with them and we anticipate future increases to occur following that. So there's quite a bit of history to this.
The intersection of I-240 and Choctaw has historically been one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. Lots of accidents there and, and part of it is the fact that there are more people trying to get off the road there than, than the two-lane roads are capable of handling at rush hour time. So I think there's, like I say, there are two or three separate miles involved and if you get into this 85% and you separate them into each one individually, you could have three or four three-quarter mile strips of, and then a gap, and then another three-quarters of a mile and then another gap. Part of this is a reaction to something that happened 20, 25 years ago when the, an effort was made to complete the loop around Oklahoma City. And the southeast part of Oklahoma City refused to deal with the loop. And the southeast part of Oklahoma City refused to deal with the loop. And so the traffic's there, despite the fact that they didn't deal with the loop, the, the traffic is still there. And so this really is designed more to relieve some of that east side traffic that, that occurs because we don't have a Kilpatrick that runs around the top, or an I-240 that runs around the bottom, it doesn't meet there, so. And it's not a developed area, it's not, it's kind of the outer edge of, when we did the sector plan, it is the very outer edge of that portion that we thought would be ripe for development, this far east boundary of that. So it's, it's, it's well in front of any development now. Not to say there's not some there, but not much.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? Thanks, Eric. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket, six items. All right, any other individual considerations here on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. This brings us on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a zoning case in Ward 7 at 301 Northeast 70th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become an I-1 light industrial district. John?
Do we have the applicant here?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application for two acres to be rezoned to I-1. If you look at the map, this is an area that is surrounded by I-1, so when we came to the planning commission, the staff recommended approval, and planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and we would ask for the same.
Thank you. Do we have any protesters?
No one has signed up.
All right.
You want to make a motion, John, to approve it?
Yes, I move to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a second on item 8A1. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 2,700 South Portland Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become a new simplified planning unit development. Meg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This location is at about Portland and Southwest 25th Street, and the purpose is to permit a snow cone facility and an indoor birthday party center. There were no protests at the planning commission, it was approved unanimously, and I just wanted to make sure that all the TEs had been accepted. So I'm seeing affirmative nod that they have, so I would move approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 8A2? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is in Ward 6, it's an emergency, emergency shelter for some being, which is located at 1101 Northwest 14th Street. Meg, you okay with this?
I am, I see ways here. Would you like to make some comments, Ray?
I, I think it'd be best just to be quiet.
I think that's really a good idea, generally. That's always my advice. We had no protests at the planning commission meeting, and this is in conformance with the OKC plan, I would move approval.
All right, comments or questions from anyone on item 8B? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Ray, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Item 8C is a couple of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is in Ward 6, and it's for the removal of a couple of two-hour metered parking spaces on North Hudson. Meg, you okay with this?
I am, I'd move approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes on item 8C1, passed unanimously. Item 8C2 is in Ward 1, it's the authorization of a no parking anytime sign on, let's see, I guess, Britton Road, 9738 Hefner Village Boulevard, technically. James, you okay with this?
I am.
All right, make a motion then.
I moved to approve it.
All right, cast your votes on item 8C2, and it passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing, this is the second time this item has come before council, has to do with the flashing yellow lights.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 8D? All right, we'll move this one ahead then for a final hearing. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing, and again, this is the second time that it's been before council. This has to do with the water rationing that we discussed last time, had the, the information provided to us. Did anyone here show up today hoping to speak on item 8E? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8F is a very similar item, again, it has to do with the water rationing, it's the second time it's been before council, but today is a public hearing. I hear a motion and a second. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 8F? All right, let's cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures.
Would you like?
We have a motion in a second. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. We have a motion in a second. Is anyone here to speak under any item listed under 8H? Has anyone signed up?
Yes.
All right, let's cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing, this would alter the consolidated plan for the Stewart property, and it is a public hearing.
Meg Gabriel sent us here from Planning Department to answer any questions you may have.
Move the item.
What exactly are we having to change the plan for?
We are, we are creating a program, Urban Renewal Housing Program, to do affordable mixed-income workforce housing in any area of town that Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority is entitled to work by statute. We've been contemplating a move of this type for a couple of years. The benefit to the city is that the funds allocated to the program are community development block grant, uh, program funds. Okura has been using these funds for many years, but in a particular context, they've been using it for slum and blight activities. There are only three categories of usage of CDBG funds, slum and blight removal is one, low mod benefit is another, urgent need is a third. 70% of CDBG funds have to be spent for low mod benefit. We are attempting to move Okura into a use of CDBG funds for low mod benefit, and that's the purpose of creating the program.
Okay, I have several questions. Does the funds have to be completed or committed by June the 30th of this year?
They do not.
And has the budget been submitted to the city for the use of the funds?
The budget is in the amendment, it's the $1 million.
But is the $1 million broken down?
Well, the, the program, the program does not establish a project. What you're voting on today is the establishment of a program. And a project budget would be, what we're attempting to do is create a program in the consolidated plan. In future iterations of a consolidated plan, we will, if this is acceptable, continue to program funds year after year for such a program. Projects are sort of a second phase. Now, in this particular case, there is a project identified, and sometimes, when we do a consolidated plan, the consolidated plan establishes funds for programs, and we don't always know what projects are going to be. But when projects are identified, yes, there will be, there's a budget associated, and we do, in this case, have a project budget. The funds are intended to go for redevelopment of, or conversion of a three, the upper three floors of a warehouse in Bricktown to residential for workforce housing. And the use, there is a budget for the project, but the urban, these urban renewal program funds are not, they're, there's a wide latitude for their use. They will be used for that conversion. Acquisition is possible, conversion activities are possible.
I would like to see at a later date, soon, how that $1 million will be spent.
Absolutely, no problem.
We have a motion on item 8I?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, item passed unanimously. Item 8J is a series of right-of-way use permits that are revocable, typically held for events. We start with an American Heart Association request to hold the Central Oklahoma Heart Walk through Ward 6 and 7 on April 20th. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Terry Bailey with the American Heart Association, and the Heart Walk will be this Saturday, April 20th, it'll be at the Bricktown Ballpark, and activities begin at 8:00 AM. We have a lot of great sponsors that'll be holding sponsor tents, that'll have a lot of different activities, such as you can come out and get your blood pressure screening, you can come and learn new ways to eat healthier, to exercise, plus a lot of fun activities for the children, a couple of bouncies, clowns, face painting, all of that kind of stuff. We'll have some really great entertainment out there. And at 10 o'clock is when the actual walk begins, it's a three-mile walk that goes through downtown Oklahoma City. And then we have a one-mile walk for survivors, or people with strollers, and then everything will kind of wrap up at about 11:45. And so we have, Mickey Mandl will be shut down for the, that period of time, and it's going to be a lot of fun. We're expecting about 10,000 to 12,000 people coming out, we'd invite all of you all to, to come, and raises a lot of really great money for a great cause, as all of you know, heart disease and stroke are number one and four killers in the country and in Oklahoma. And we have a long way to go in Oklahoma, but we're making some great strides. Any questions?
I don't think so. Terry, thank you very much.
Okay.
Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passed unanimously. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Item 8J2 comes to us from the Oklahoma Family Center for Autism. They're going to hold the 2013 Autism Peace Walk 5K, May 4th in Bricktown. Is anyone here representing this organization? It's in Ward 6 or 7?
I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8J2, passed unanimously. Item 8J3 comes to us from Red Coyote Running and Fitness, Inc., and hosting McNelly's. Is anyone here representing this item today? We'd appreciate this because this item, as you'll note, is the Chad Peary Hub Run, and of course Officer Peary passed away this week, completely unrelated to this announcement and the event, and we, we appreciate you, you know, coming down today and, and explaining how this can now honor Chad Peary in a different way.
No problem. My name is Joe Wolf, 333 Northwest, Northwest Fifth Street. I'm the general manager of McNelly's Red Coyote. Could not be here, they have some members in Boston Marathon, so they're going to deal with that, so I'll be the spokesperson. Going forward right now, we're kind of in a somber mode, and we're kind of taking it slowly. I've yet to speak with anyone from the Chad Perry family. Our goal the past two years and this year during planning is always to raise funds and community awareness of the Chad Perry Foundation. Now we're looking at this to be more of a memorial and a celebration of what Chad has given back, and through raising funds for his foundation, he's going to continue to give back and also extend his legacy for years to come. We feel at this point that we want to proceed. Once I talked to his family members, some other people that are associated with this, if we feel that it's something that we need to postpone or cancel in the immediate future, then we will look at that. Obviously, we have a lot of steps to go through, and this is one of the steps, getting revocable if the family would like to proceed, so we can continue to raise money and help his legacy move on.
All right, thanks for coming down today. Meg, it's in Ward 6. All right, comments or questions here on item 8J3? Cast your votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8J4 is from Urban Agrarian OLC, asking to host the Spring Fest Earth Day in the Farmers Market District on April 21st.
Hi, I'm People Harrington, I'm with Ert Urban, the earth elements portion of the Urban Agrarian Partnership in the Farmers Market District. This Sunday, the 21st, we are hosting our second event in the Farmers Market District, which is Spring Fest in conjunction with Earth Day. We will be having vendor booths, we have lots of sponsors, a kids' corral area, a planted seed exchange, we have some antique tractors, some farm animals. We're trying to unite the community and create a local food district. This is a way to bring people together, to eat great food, meet with the farmers who produce the food, just engage the community in a positive family environment. We're very excited to take this to the next level, so.
What if we be using the outside of the building, or will this be taking place inside the building, Bert?
It's outside, actually. We have requested Southwest 2nd Street be blocked off at Klein and Ellison, so we have the vendor booths and the tractors down 2nd Street. The band and the stage is on the lot next to the Urban Agrarian, and then we're using the parking lot for the Farmers Market behind the building and across the street of Southwest 2nd for some of the activities.
Okay.
It's a really great event, I was there last year and just...
It's the same thing as we had last fall.
Lots, lots of fun, I hope the weather's...
Except for there'll be, there'll be more people.
Yeah. Hope the weather's going to be bright and sunny for you.
And I'm not one of the farm animals.
And this event will be Sunday?
Yes.
All right. This Sunday then, Spring Fest Earth Day in the Farmers Market District, and urge people to come down and take part. Thank you for what you're doing.
Move approval.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Meg, did you make a motion? All right, cast your votes on item 8J4, passed unanimously. Item 8K updates our policy dealing with mortgages and debt on rehabilitative loans.
All right, this is an existing policy that we've, we've had since 98, and we're updating it, and we have a rehab program here in Oklahoma City, we use federal dollars to rehab houses in need qualifications, and this modifies how, how the mayor can sign off on mortgage releases and subordinate agreements.
All right, comments or questions on item 8K? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8L is our agreement with the firefighters on compensation for their health insurance. Comments or questions here? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8M, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
We do not.
How about a motion then to pass the resolution? We have a second? Cast your votes on 8N, passed unanimously. Item 8N, understand we do not need executive session?
We don't.
Move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the resolution on 8N, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. And same thing on 8O, understand we do not need executive session, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 8P, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would probably be in order? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 8Q is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of the items listed under 8Q? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to item 9, it's items from council. James, anything for us today? Ed?
Nothing other than some good news from Oklahoma City-based retailer Hobby Lobby. I just want to acknowledge, because I think it's an important, they're giving raises to all 17,000 employees. The lowest wage for a full-time employee is $14 an hour, almost twice the federal minimum wage of $7.25 an hour. Oklahoma has the third highest number of, of citizens working for minimum wage, about 7% to 8% of the population, and I think Hobby Lobby is setting an excellent example. It will have an impact on our local economy, because that segment of the population is spending virtually everything in the local economy, and so they're showing that it can be done, and I applaud them. Thanks.
Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to commend Channel 9 for the coverage that they gave, the 7th Annual Festival that was held out of Northwest 10th Street this past Saturday. I'd like to thank the Lions Club for bringing a band to do health screening, which was very heavily used. The Friends of 10th Street organized the event, there were activities for children, there were free hot dogs, there were exotic animals, including my favorite, a little baby kangaroo made an appearance, and it was an attempt to, again, shine light in an area that is very challenged, and to get the residents in that area thinking together, as coming together as a community, and what they could possibly do to improve the quality of life on Northwest 10th Street. And I'd like to encourage the neighbors in the Windsor Oaks neighborhood to attend their meeting tonight at Windsor Hills Elementary School. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, my condolences to the Chad Perry family. It's a tremendous loss, and the Perrys were just a great family. My wife got to know Jan, first of all, shoot, 15 years ago, when her daughter and my son would be playing those junior varsity basketball games with 10 other people in the gym, so they spent a lot of time getting to know each other, and they're just a great family, and it's truly a loss for the entire city as far as the accident that occurred. Secondly, I'd like to welcome a couple of the newer citizens to Ward 5. Kason and Corbin Greenwell were born Friday and are now at home, so congratulations to their family. Greenwell were born Friday and are now at home, so congratulations to their family. Sorry, I don't have any pictures available, but there will be some after the council meeting. Thank you.
I've seen those pictures, and they're darling. I'd also like to express my condolences to the Perry family. Jan is a dear, dear friend, and I just, there are not words to express how difficult this must be for them today. So I'm so terribly sorry. On a really positive note, though, I'd like to recognize a couple of things. Downtown Oklahoma City on Saturday night hosted, or Friday night, hosted a starlight dinner in our newly renovated bicentennial park. It was a sold-out crowd, and the proceeds went to benefit Emerson School. And I think we raised in excess of $10,000 to go to Emerson School, which will be used in part with Variety Health Clinic to provide a new health clinic at the school. So it's a wonderful partnership, and it was a, just a spectacular evening. So I do hope it's an annual event. Second thing, Saturday night, I'd also like to recognize and congratulate the Canterbury Choral Society and OCU Bonaventure School of Music. They presented Leonard Bernstein's Mass. It's a very complicated and complex piece of music that was commissioned by Jackie Kennedy for the opening of the Kennedy Center some 50 years ago. And it was a wonderful collaboration. Both the adult and children's choir performed, and there was just a spectacular review of the event in the paper today. And I just think it's so nice when we see arts organizations working together and collaborating to present something in Oklahoma City that we have never seen before. It was really a wonderful event.
Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, the big event, the OU big event, had several events in Ward 7 in collaboration with Wildwood, Hills and North Neighborhood Association Players in the Hills and a couple of other neighborhood associations where they went around their neighborhood and picked up trash. So again, I would like to thank those neighborhood associations in Ward 7, and also OU big event in on. This morning, we have several Ward 7 residents who are here. Libby Buckner, John Billbury, and former mayor of El Reno, Oklahoma, John Pettis. Thank you.
Pat? All right. City manager reports?
We have a presentation this morning on our transit system. A number of months ago, the council directed us to go and look at ways to improve our transit system. And so COTPA went and procured a firm by the name of Nelson Nygaard. And Rick is going, Rick Kane from COTPA is going to introduce.
Thank you. Just a little background on how we got to where we are today. It was last summer when the COTPA Board of Trustees actually authorized the issuance of a request for proposal to hire a transit consultant to come in and evaluate and make recommendations of how we might improve the efficiency of our rubber tire bus service. There were seven firms that responded to the RFP request. A selection committee went through those seven, narrowed it down to four. We interviewed those four firms. And then in December, the COTPA Board awarded a contract to Nelson Nygaard to come in and do this study. We have representatives from Nelson Nygaard here today. They're going to make a presentation of kind of where we are in the process, and also some general recommendations as to what they are going to suggest relative to changes that we can make in our transit system. The purpose of today's presentation is really to generate some discussion, too, amongst council. And we have members of our Board of Trustees that are also here this morning. And then from today's conversations, this will be incorporated into a final report that they are scheduled to present to COTPA in the month of May. So with that, Tim Payne and Thomas Whitman are here from Nelson Nygaard. Tim will kick off the presentation. I would suggest that just for the sake of continuity as we go through it, that if they can run through their presentation first and then go back and ask questions, it might be a little bit easier to follow. So...
Hey, Rick, why don't you introduce the board members, starting with our esteemed chairman, Long's chairman?
Sure. Pleased to have this morning representative of our board. We have our chairman, Chris Kaufman. Chris is our longest-serving member of the COTPA Board. He started in the late 1980s. So he's been with us over 25 years as a board member. And then, since the middle 90s, has been serving as chairman of our board. We also have Rand Randall here this morning.
Wade.
Laura Johnson, who serves as a surrogate for the city manager, and Steve Hill, who serves as a surrogate for the mayor, and Craig Freeman. I mentioned Craig. I think that's it. We have two other board members who were not able to make it today. Then also David Greenwell, who serves on the council, is also a board member of COTPA as well.
Mayor, if I could, I'd also like to recognize Nathaniel Harding, who's here. Nathaniel serves as the chairman of the MAPS III Transit Subcommittee.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Ryan and members of the city council, good morning, and thank you for hosting us today. I don't want to go through a lot of what Rick has already said, but this is a preliminary presentation that we're doing today. Most importantly is to get your reaction to what we're going to talk about, so we anticipate some lively conversation when we're finished today. We will be back in May to do a final presentation on this particular thing. Our task was to really evaluate Metro's bus transit system. This was pretty much done at the request of the city council and the COTPA Board. There is a lot of thinking that perhaps there are ways that the route system that currently exists can be improved in a way that will improve both ridership and productivity of the system. That is, that you get more riders for each dollar that you spend on the system overall. There was also a request that we look at and make recommendations for what could be done to improve the system. Were there additional funds available, both in the short term and in the long term? One of the things that brought that to light was the desire to look at the possibility of Sunday service. And the question came, is that the highest and best use if we had additional funds, or are there other things that maybe we ought to be looking at? So we have attempted to answer that question as well. The direction from the council, then, was to develop a short-term, a set of short-term recommendations. A couple of months ago, I was here and interviewed most of you on the council. Not everybody was in town at the time, but not everybody was elected either. Councilman Pettis, and there's one other, too. Krenier, yes, welcome. I'm sorry that didn't get a chance to talk with you personally when I was here a couple of months ago. But a couple of common thoughts came out of the council, and I just want to acknowledge those things. There was one common thought that perhaps serving a smaller service area inside of Oklahoma City could perhaps be an improvement to service. And we will intentionally talk about that today. There was also the thought that, given Oklahoma City's very strong grid street system, that perhaps a transit system that is more grid-like in its character could also improve service. There's a couple of very high-level summary thoughts. There was a lot more that came out, but we don't have time for a sermonette this morning on what I heard from the council. So we will continue on. Some things that we have done since we've been under contract, some things that are not listed on the board that we've accomplished. We went back and looked at background documents that have been written already on the transit system. One of those things is the 2005 Fixed Guideway Study that was done as a joint effort between ACOG and COTPA. We also reviewed the 2012 rider survey and the 2012 non-rider survey, again, trying to collect information on what's going on in Oklahoma City. And along that same line, in addition to doing stakeholder interviews with most of the council that's here, we also interviewed several other key opinion leaders within the city, as well as some transit users. And ACOG, city planning staff, made quite a round. We actually did over 20 stakeholder interviews. That summarized in our report. We also attended a transit workshop that was sponsored by council member Shadid. Thank you. And brought well-known transit professional consultant Jarrett Walker to town, who talked about some general principles in transit planning. We were present for both his workshop and his lecture. So with that, I'd like to go and talk about some of the things that we have observed about existing conditions. On the chart in front of you is a chart of ridership from 2007 on through 2012. And what I want to note about this is we've intentionally exaggerated the scale to show the variation. This isn't from 0 to 2.8 million. This is from 2.4 to 2.8 million. Over the last six years, the system has existed within 11% swing. So the ridership has not varied by more than 11% in that course of six years. That included in 2008 about a 9% ridership loss that was largely due to a service reduction that was put into place in 2008. Only in 2012 has ridership finally exceeded the pre-service reduction ridership, but only by less than 1%. And I had a general manager once at a transit system I served who always said, "Don't use that word stagnant growth. That doesn't go well." But the truth of the matter is, what we're looking at here is a system that, compared especially to other systems in the country who've stayed relatively healthy economically, this is what I would consider to be fairly a low amount of growth in a time when many other systems in the country are seeing 10%, 11% per year growth. So by comparison to other places, the growth here has been rather flat. On the other hand, in terms of how well you're doing for each dollar that you're expending, and the easy way to measure transit productivity is for each hour of service that you put on the street, how many people ride that hour of service. So every time a bus goes down the road for one hour, that's a revenue hour of service. We measure how many people get on that bus, and that is passengers per revenue hour. And since you know what the cost of putting a bus on the street for an hour is, it gives you a really good approximation of how well your investment is doing without getting into the dollars and cents. It's much easier to measure over time, by the way, because you don't have to account for all the different things like inflation, fuel prices going up and down, those sorts of things that are somewhat out of your control. But what is in your control is how, what service is on the street. So productivity has continued to increase over this six-year period. So for every hour of service, for every dollar that you've invested in the system, you've gotten a little bit more out of it every year consistently for the last six years. Now, having said that, this progress is really good. But again, comparing to some other systems of similar size, we would prefer to see this number someplace in the mid-20s in terms of passengers per revenue service hour. Just to give you a perspective on where it would like to be over time. So we would hope to see this graph continue to increase over the years that are coming in the future. One of the things that we did was to have every trip in the system ridden over the course of a week, which gave us a snapshot as to where people ride the system. And there's several significant findings that came out of that just from an umbrella overall approach. We have this all broken down route by route by route, by the way, but my job is to talk about where things are more universally. So if we look at what we've called kind of the core of the system, and that is a boundary drawn by 36th, Martin Luther King, 29th, and May to the west, 1/3 of all the system boardings, that's people who get on a bus originally, happen outside of that square. An additional 1/3 of all the boardings happen right at the transit center, just a couple blocks from here at Fourth and Hudson. And the other 3rd happened at other locations inside the core area. And boiling that down, what that means overall, because each person is typically two boardings in a day, they get on, say, in the morning from, assume they're home, and go someplace else in the afternoon, or when they're finished shopping, or when they're finished at the doctor. They get back on a bus, and they go back somewhere else. Typically, that's how it works. What this means is about 1/2 of all COTPA's ridership is related to activity that occurs outside that core area. And I want to underscore the importance of that because we're going to keep talking about that several times over. This is not too surprising a result if one looks at the demographics of Oklahoma City. Because what we find outside the core area is there are substantial areas outside the core area where the demographics indicate a high likelihood of people would be using transit. And some of those characteristics are lower-income neighborhoods, autoless households, a lot of youth, substantial numbers of youth, elderly people, disabled people. They're the folks that you tend to find on the transit system more often than not. And those areas, many of them, not all of them, I want to underscore that, but many of them are outside that core area. So if you just looked at the demographics of Oklahoma City, this finding that 1/3 of the boardings happen outside the core area should not be a big surprise based on demographic profile of the city. Moving on, then, to the service that's provided. Boy, that's really red, isn't it? One of the things that we did was to look at the service levels that are provided at Metro. What we found here is that only 7 out of 22 routes have a headway, that is, the time between buses that is regular. And in the transit industry, we call this clockface. A regular headway is called clockface. And what that means is if a bus is running every half hour, you know that the bus is coming at 2:00 and 2:30, at 3:00 and 3:30, or it's coming at 3:15 and 3:45. It's mnemonically very easy for people to remember. They remember if the last bus went past 30 minutes ago. The next one is coming past at 30 minutes ahead. From a ridership perspective, clockface headways are extraordinarily important because it allows people to ride the service without having to understand, carry around, or remember a schedule. And it does, in fact, produce additional connectivity opportunities between routes. And I'll explain in a second why that's important in this system. It presents a simpler user experience for the customers. And frequently, in systems that have clockface headways, you would see ridership that's someplace 20% to 25% greater per revenue service hour than you will see in a system that does not have clockface headways. And it's simply because the system is that much more user-friendly. And moving ahead, then, to talk about why that's important in this system, or one aspect of why that's important in this system. 60% of the people that get on a COTPA bus every day transfer to another COTPA bus on their way from one origin to another destination. Many of these people transfer twice. So they not only get on one, then they get on another, and they get on another. So this would be like someone coming from the west side of town, coming to the transit center, transferring to another bus, going someplace east, and then transferring yet again to another bus. So a double transfer. In a system that has this many transfers, connections are absolutely crucial to building good ridership. There's two aspects to that that are really important. One is, does the schedule synchronize? Do, are people able to get off one bus and get on another with a relatively short waiting time? And this is the point where clockface headways, where regular intervals between the entire system really pay off, because it allows you to schedule the system in a way that people have shorter waiting times between buses, and it makes their trips go just that much more smoother. The other thing that's really important in a system that has this kind of connectivity is on-time performance. And doing the onboard ride check that we did, the other thing we did is kept track of the time. And from this one-week snapshot that we took, the on-time performance of this system is at about 74%. That's on average, system-wide. For a system like this, with the ridership as it is and the traffic in Oklahoma City, we would expect to see this someplace in the upper 80s to low 90s. So COTPA has some work to do on on-time performance, and it's really important in terms of being able to facilitate connectivity. So to summarize, some of the strengths of the system we found is that the coverage is provided throughout the city. That's a good thing because that provides transit access to a lot more people. The downtown transit center is a good facility, and it does focus this radial, current radial design of the system. That is a good thing. The downtown route network has some good things about it, and it allows you to get around. I'm going to talk about one of the weaknesses of that in a second. And there is some crosstown service in Oklahoma City on 23rd. That is actually one of the strongest routes in the system. It doesn't even come downtown, and yet, from a productivity and a daily ridership basis, it's actually one of the strongest routes... it's actually one of the strongest routes in the entire system. That's what, so those are some of the strengths. And of course, with strengths come weaknesses. The route network is not what transit planners would call intuitive. It's not something where a person who's standing on the street and says, "I want to go here. I know I got, get on this bus to go there." They just know it without having to look at a map. As I already said, the frequencies are inconsistent between routes and even within routes themselves. Transfers, I already talked about this, are difficult due to the irregular headways. This actually slows down the user experience on the system going from one place to another. There are areas in Oklahoma City that are currently receiving transit service that, quite frankly, don't have density sufficient to support transit service. So you're ending up spending money in areas that you end up with very low return on the investment. There is some service duplication in the system as well, where you're running multiple routes on streets where there, you're not getting the kind of ridership that you need to run multiple routes on the street. And again, the on-time performance is a weakness in the system as well. Some of the opportunities that we have seen in Oklahoma City, I already mentioned this, is the very strong street grid in Oklahoma City. That's, transit planners would die to have a city with this kind of street grid because it is so, so strong. The downtown streets being converted to two-way operation presents a very significant opportunity to simplify the transit network in downtown Oklahoma City, and that's something that we should take advantage of. There is growing downtown residential and employment markets to be served. That's a good thing because it tends to be more compact, it's a little easier to serve, there's not as many people spread out. Activity, there are activity centers that are outside of the core of the city, which are also good because that allows us to look at the possibility, we're going to talk about that in a little bit as well, of looking at starting other hubs besides ones in downtown Oklahoma, Oklahoma City only. Before I turn it over to Thomas to talk about our recommendations for the network, one of the things I want to talk about are the, the idea of who transit riders are. Oftentimes, in the transit world, we talk about, we want to be able to attract choice riders to our system. And it's typically talked about as though it's a digital number. It's either on or off. A person's either a choice rider or a non-choice rider. In reality, all parts of the population change continuously, and it is more of a spectrum, it's a continuum of choice rather than either on or off. There are people who both enter and exit a position that may make transit a desirable thing or a less desirable thing depending on their personal situation. And we could talk about a lot of examples, but I'll just give you a couple of examples here. A person suffers some kind of disability overnight. That's, by the way, that's the one minority class that none of us are immune to joining at any given moment. Like, I'm not wishing this on myself, but I can have a stroke and join that group immediately, standing here right before you today. So a person can suffer some kind of a disabling condition, and they're no longer able to drive. It immediately puts them into the place of, if I want to continue to be mobile on my own, I now am choosing to ride transit, or I'm choosing to depend on friends and family to move me from place to place. So that tends to put people in that category more towards the, the, the choose-to-ride-transit group. Another group, I have one car in my family, have a catastrophic accident, can't afford to fix the car. The car's sitting in the driveway, it's smashed up, it's non-driveable. I've got to work and earn money for quite some time before I can repair the car. I'm now in a place where I can ride my bike, I can walk, I can try and get a ride from someone, but another choice I have is to ride transit. So it is not really a, it's not either a zero or a one, either it's a non-choice or a choice. It is, in fact, a state of personal condition that occurs on an ongoing basis, and the population is always changing. It is a dynamic thing. So with that thought, I'm going to let Thomas come up and talk about our specific recommendations for the network.
Good morning. I want to start off by talking about some of the big-picture themes that we have as part of the recommendations. And some of them are to go to clock-faced headways or more regular headways, as Tim had described. We'll be looking at simplifying the route structure to make it easier for folks to understand the system the first time around. Market research nationwide has shown that ten to twenty percent of all riders on a transit system annually change. They're new, much like it's a continuum. We need to be able to make it simple enough so that new riders can understand the system right from the get-go. Be looking at improving the directness of service, making the service faster than what it is today, realigning the routes so that the routes go where the demand is and the routes no longer go where there's less demand. And this is, this is going to be a trade-off. It's going to be a real challenge when we identify some of those areas where, you know, there's insufficient ridership to support transit service here. So what do we do? Because there are people there that are using the service right now, but just not that many. We'll be looking at creating high-frequency transit services through the downtown corridors in areas where there is, you know, high demand for that. Be looking at using these recommendations to address system reliability. And last, you know, from a big-picture theme perspective, all of these transit access depend on pedestrian access. And this is one of the big challenges you have in Oklahoma City, that large parts of the city lack sidewalks or lack pedestrian amenities, and every transit trip begins or ends, and ends, I might add, as a pedestrian trip. So ensuring that you have adequate pedestrian access is one of the overriding themes that is an underlying for any transit improvement that we might be looking at today and looking out into the future. We developed three different alternatives, and we call those the efficiency alternative, which basically takes, how can we take the existing amount of resources that we have and make the system more efficient, more effective, get more ridership, and begin, you know, improving mobility for more citizens within Oklahoma City? The next alternative, we call the additional resources alternative, which we looked at as, once we right-size the system, we made it work well within its existing budget, what are the next steps that we would take? How would we improve the span of service, which means when buses operate, how late they operate, and what days of the week they operate, and how frequently do those services operate? And the last alternative, which we call the unconstrained resources alternative, focuses on what are some of the other unmet needs from a geographic perspective within the Oklahoma City region, where there are warrants for transit services, yet there's not the funding to do so right now. So be looking at geographic expansion under that. I'm going to start off with the efficiency scenario, and there was a couple of different key things that we looked at doing, and I'll discuss each one of these in a little bit greater detail, which is, one, reduce the number of routes that are there, simplify the service, improve the frequency on the routes that are left, and improve the transfers. And all of these together, you know, while they, you know, will improve the overall passenger comfort and ease and reliability, and add the number of passenger, add to the number of passengers that you're carrying right now. So let me start off by, you know, going through some of the ways we can simplify the service network. We would be looking at reducing the number of routes operated by Metro Transit by four routes. We would also be looking at making less deviations in the routes, so that a route that is operating on MLK, for instance, would stay on MLK rather than deviating into the neighborhood. The reason for this is to assist in understanding that if you're in that neighborhood, it's like, where do I catch a bus? You walk to MLK and catch a bus, rather than, well, most of the time, you go to MLK, but in this area, you have to go like two blocks over into the neighborhood and stand at a corner where, you know, you might or might not see a bus come by. It's, we'd also, by staying on arterial or major, major roadways or collectors, the service is more direct, the travel times are faster, and ultimately, passengers, more passengers respond to a faster trip associated with that. You know, these, and ultimately, the grid network or the, the, the grid of routes that is left is easier to understand, it's easier to market. So this does not come without a price, though. You know, the service area will shrink under these recommendations. There are several areas, south and south Oklahoma City, south of Fifty-Ninth Street, as well as the Green Pastures neighborhoods, that would lose service under this proposal. There will also be less neighborhood access in certain areas of, of west of MLK, between Sixteenth and Tenth, as well as Villa Avenue, and areas on northeast Twenty-Third, north of there in particular, where, you know, having routes deviate into neighborhoods would be replaced by routes staying on arterials. Wrong direction. We'd also be looking at simplifying the downtown network. On the right-hand side of your screen right now, you see a map of the existing downtown network, and I want to say this was, downtown network looks partially because, the way it does, because the street network and the one-way streets dictated how those routes would go. On the other hand, you know, many of the routes also are designed to provide a semblance of downtown circulation. So each route, after it does, you know, comes and serves its part of the city, comes and circulates in downtown. So we're left with a, a very much duplicated service in downtown Oklahoma City. And we can do this a different way that's more effective and easier to understand. By looking at the, the map on the left, where, that's a suggested service concept, where we concentrate routes on certain corridors, and these become your transit corridors. These become, if some visitor comes to the street, where do I catch a bus? Or if any citizen says, "Where do I catch a bus in downtown?", you point them to these certain streets, and they will be able to catch a bus. And because there's concentration of buses on there, the frequency on those corridors can be higher than what it is right now. Rather than having a bus every forty-five minutes on these streets, you can have a bus every fifteen minutes, which begins the ability to attract more people to use your service because it's more convenient. We'd also be looking at improving the frequency on the routes. And Tim alluded to the thirty-minute headway or the clock-faced headway as being extraordinarily important in attracting new riders from a simplicity of service by understanding the schedule. There's something else associated with that. If we shorten our routes a little bit so that the runtimes are either thirty minutes or sixty minutes, we're able to get more trips out of those routes. A route that's operating every sixty-five minutes, and you, you shorten the route a little bit to operate every sixty minutes, that's a fourteen percent increase in service. We typically see a twenty percent increase in ridership as a result of doing that. So there's some real value to looking at strategic shrinking of the services to get more frequent service associated with this. So we did do exactly that by looking at shrinking the service boundary slightly to be able to improve service frequency on twelve different routes. And all but three of those routes right now would be on a clock-faced headway, which means they would be on an even thirty-minute or sixty-minute, you know, type schedule. That's easy to understand. And this would have the additional benefit of being able to improve transfers at the transit center. Rather than having to wait, and we, we went and did intercept surveys, say, "How long have you been waiting here?" And the average wait at the transit center was over twenty minutes. By creating a timed transfer system where, you know, several routes come in and come out, your average transfer wait time will go down to less than five minutes. That's a tremendous reduction in the overall travel time of your existing passengers and begins the ability to attract more people to your transit system because it's more convenient, it's more competitive with the automobile at that point. But we don't want to stop just at the downtown transit center and say, "This is where you need to improve this." We'd be looking at creating three different other focal points of service, like subhubs, you know, within the area, within Oklahoma City, so that you don't necessarily have to come downtown to complete your trips. We'd be looking at sub-area hubs at the Walmart or Reno, as I said, Reno and MacArthur, where we'd look at having four routes come together and have the ability to transfer at that location. The OU Medical Center, which is a current, you know, great destination for passengers, but also a place where, by putting some additional facilities in, you know, makes it, and amenities, would make a waiting area and make a transfer more, more appealing. And likewise, at Pennsylvania and Twenty-Third, where you have several routes coming together as well. The overall goal of these is to not force everybody to come downtown, and if they do have to, to minimize their waiting time so that the overall transit travel time becomes more competitive. Be looking at creating three, you know, several different fifteen-minute corridors. And, you know, the important thing about a frequent service corridor or fifteen-minute service is that becomes the threshold where people who would, you know, normally have to look at a schedule to use transit service would no longer have to look at a schedule. You can just go out and wait for a bus, and within fifteen minutes, you know, a bus will be there. And there's two different corridors using existing funding that we could get fifteen-minute service. One of them is between the downtown transit center and the OU Medical Center, and the other one is between the downtown transit center and the Twenty-Third in Pennsylvania. We'd have several, and those would be operated on weekday, fifteen-minute service all day. We're using a combination of two different routes. We can get that same effect in two other corridors to the south end during the peak times, you know, on exchange, between downtown and Exchange and downtown and South Capitol Hill. Again, during those peak times, we'd be able to have very frequent service that could attract more folks to use the buses, you know, to, for downtown circulation as well as to access downtown in the first place. One of the things that we also want to touch upon is bus stop spacing. And right now, the existing bus stop spacing is pretty much every block, there's a bus stop. And one of the reasons for that is that you have no sidewalks. And, you know, that, you know, in order to minimize some of the walks, because there's no facilities, no, you know, to walk comfortably, you put a bus stop on every block. What this has, though, it has a positive effect on folks who don't want to walk very far, but it has a negative effect on speed and reliability of the existing services. And because buses are stopping at every block, the travel time becomes uncompetitive. It becomes extraordinarily slow trip. And what we found is that most people, if the pedestrian infrastructure is there, and in some cases in Oklahoma City it is there, but in some cases are not, most people are willing to walk to higher-quality services. And, you know, by doing that, it improves the overall travel time on transit. It also, you know, it speeds things up, and it becomes easier to understand for folks. And people don't, aren't sitting on the bus like, "Why is it taking twenty minutes to go two miles?" Or, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but not, not much. The, the other thing from a bus stop perspective is by consolidating stops, it gives you the ability to control what is at those stops. If you have, you know, stop every block, you have to think about what amenities do I have on there? And it becomes a huge task in putting shelters, benches, anything, a pad, so it's ADA accessible, it's become very expensive very fast. If you, the less stops you have give you the ability to concentrate your limited resources on those areas and those stops where people are truly using it on an ongoing basis. So from a capital facilities perspective, there's a huge incentive to consolidate stops as well. What are the results of this? Using your existing funding levels, we believe we can, we can see an increase in ridership of five to ten percent. You know, not the, you know, as Tim called it, you know, slight growth, stagnant growth, but see a fairly quick five to ten percent increase in ridership. And actually, that's on the low end of our estimate of what ridership could do. The overall passenger travel times will decrease, and yet, you know, I, I say, "This is all fine and dandy, we're going to get more riders on the buses." But I want to be clear, by making some of the choices that we're talking about right here, there will be people who are negatively impacted. And we need to be very clear about that. There's a three hundred, approximately three hundred fifty boardings, or about, you know, three point five percent of your system total, who would be more than a quarter mile away from, you know, the proposed services. And of those, about fifty of them would be more than half a mile away. So you would be looking at, you know, certain people would be disenfranchised from this. Overall, from the citizens of Oklahoma City perspective, more people would be served. And this is a trade-off that we're going to have to have, and I assume we're going to have a discussion about this trade-off as soon as this presentation is over. I want to briefly touch upon the additional resources scenario, and this is, you know, once we right-size the system, and these assume, you know, what else do we do? Improve the span of service, i.e. operate in evening times, improve frequency, and improve the days of the week it operates on. From a perspective of how do we increase ridership in your system the most, the first priority should be to improve weekday service frequency on all routes to every thirty minutes. Adding fifteen-minute service to North Twenty-Third Street, you know, the Route Twenty-Three is also absolutely crucial. Some of the other improvements on there, they're all important. You know, adding weekend, weekday evening service to ten-thirty, Sunday service, you know, adding another fifteen-minute corridor, all of them are, you know, you have the need for it. But in order to prioritize those, and we've heard a lot about Sunday service in some of the meetings we've had, we've heard a lot about evening service in some of the meetings we've had. But to, to come up and say, "This is the priority, one, two, three things should be in," this should truly reflect the community values and community needs. And it's going to vary depending on which area of the city you're in. So we can talk about from a ridership perspective what will get you the most bang for a buck. what will get you the most bang for a buck. But one of the things I want to encourage you to think about is from your community values perspective, what gives you the most value, you know, what is the most important for the community? The last element that I want to talk about is the unconstrained expansion scenario. And what we looked at here is, you know, where are areas in Oklahoma City that warrant additional services based on demographics, based on existing and future travel demand, and, you know, and how do these fit in with some of the corridors that were mentioned as part of the 2005 fixed guideway, you know, study? And you'll see, you know, we did not include some of the high-capacity transit lines in here. We assumed those are complementary associated with those. And, you know, those are some opportunities in the future as they come up that will complement this network. But the idea behind the unconstrained expansion network is to expand the grid in areas that have sufficient densities to support the transit services. Be looking at expanding the geographic reach of the services, you know, both to the north and to the south, to begin adding in a high-quality airport connection that connects folks coming to the airport, to downtown, to hotels, to businesses, the convention center, Bricktown, give them a way that, you know, that's easy to understand and is quick and convenient to use. We'd also be suggesting a different type of service methodology, delivery methodology, which is called metro-linked type services for the general public, to expand service in areas where fixed route transit, a big bus, may not be appropriate, but a smaller vehicle that is more flexible may be appropriate. So it's a more cost-effective way for residents, for the elderly, you know, for elderly or folks who have no other options to access transit, but also for folks coming from other areas to access the jobs that might be in those areas. And last but not least, we'd be looking at, you know, being open to other opportunities for additional crosstown services, bus rapid transit lines, or things of that nature that will arise in the future. The next steps for this is to finalize the scenarios based on the input and feedback that we received today and the next, you know, and then, you know, create a draft final report, and then come back and talk with you in a month about what that might look like. And that concludes this presentation, and we are ready for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your participation. We appreciate it. Other questions?
Sure. Several. Is Russell Klaus here?
Russell, I had a planning conference in Chicago.
Is anyone from the Planning Department here?
There are several people from the Planning Department that are at the, it's the American Planning Association meeting in Chicago, so there's no one here today to discuss this particular item.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate. But I just, what I want to touch on is maybe, I mean, the discussion has focused on COPTA and our transit agency, but I want to talk just for a second about how planning might improve our transit system and how coordination between planning and transit really doesn't seem to have been on our radar, or Public Works for that matter, I mean, in terms of our streetscapes and things like that. And some examples might be the Mary Mahoney Center, the new Oklahoma City County Health Department is building a new facility which is designed to try and impact public health outcomes in the 73111 ZIP code, which has the worst health outcomes. But they built a facility where there's no transit service. And now we're learning that there's going to be a new social security facility built on 122nd and Kelly where there's no transit service. And so it seems that one thing we're asking our transit agency to do is chase poor planning and poor design. Whereas if we had a lot of these facilities, which we know are going to, would need to be integrated with transit, preferably on what looks like a straight line, then it would greatly simplify and improve efficiencies of our transit system. So I guess, let me just ask Rick, since planning is not--
I should mention, I would be remiss to not mention that the Transportation and Parking Department does have a planning staff. Larry Hopper is here from that department, and he does work on the planning aspect of the transit system.
Right. What I'm looking for is for everyone to get on the same page, developers, architects, planners, transit officials, everyone. Be in our Neighborhood Conservation Committee, where we're looking at what federal funds, what housing projects, what development projects, for transit always to be part of the conversation, for transit to always be a variable. Which senior housing development should we fund? Well, which one is on a transit line should be one of the variables. I guess that's, that's really the point. And I don't, I don't see, certainly in the Neighborhood Conservation Committee, and I don't see that as part of the discussion, and I'm hoping that we all can get on the same page there. In terms of the Social Security Administration facility, for example, it's on 23rd. Right now, it's on a, it's on a high, we have great transit service on 23rd. It's one of our best lines. So my understanding is what Social Security puts out an RFP that says they want to build a new facility, and that it should have transit access. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
As far as I know, that's true. That, one of the requirements in the RFP was that public transportation service would be available at whatever location they end up choosing.
So a developer owns land on 122nd and Kelly, and he answers the RFP, and then what happens? Does he contact us? Does he, are they--
Yeah, in this specific instance, he would, he contacted us and said he would like to get transit service up there. Obviously, we're two miles away just to get to that point, and then two miles back to get onto the regular route. So it then becomes an issue of who pays for that service. Our response is that he needs to look at that as being a cost of the development, and that he would need to contribute money to the service. Now that's one of the issues to try to cover costs. The other challenge that we have in a situation like this is the impact that that has on that route itself, the running time of that route. He talked about clock face, or he talked about this regular arrivals at the transit center. When you start expanding routes, then that starts impacting that, and most often in a negative way. It also impacts its connections with other routes in the system. So there's a dollars and cents discussion that takes, that needs to take place, but then there's also this discussion about its impact on the system in total. So, I mean, those are, those are challenges that we have. Otherwise, the developer comes and goes to the specific council person who represents them and says, "I need some help. I need some money." I mean, that would be the typical way it would work.
And what, what would-- Go ahead. Go, go ahead. What would you estimate the cost to divert two miles, 222nd and Kelly?
Well, we did, we did the work on this one. We know it's in the, in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $300,000. And that is to provide what we would assume to be regular service. I mean, again, you have options. If you want to reduce the cost, you don't, you're not as frequent to a location. So you make three trips a day instead of seven or eight trips a day. Then it becomes a question of what's, what's practical in terms of delivering a quality service to a destination.
So is there a mechanism, my understanding is now that Social Security has a contract with this developer to move it to 122nd and Kelly. Is there a mechanism for us to communicate with county, state, or federal agencies to say, you know, "You're considering putting it on 122nd and Kelly. We want you to understand, there's no transit service there. Your RFP asked for transit service, and we want you to understand that without a $300,000 a year subsidy from the Oklahoma City taxpayers, there is no transit service to that, that proposed location."
Well, I'm sure that that has been made, made them aware of that situation. I think the challenge that we have is just the general awareness. I mean, we're having more discussion about transit today than, than we were six years ago. And I think increasing the awareness and really coming to the table is part of the challenge. You know, a private developer, we can't control what they do or where they go if they want to build a facility. Hopefully, the awareness of the need for public transportation and the discussion that's taking place opens up some eyes about that consideration. We certainly would work with the Planning Department if they're made aware of some of these issues, and I question whether they're always aware.
I would like to say that the GSA is required to notify the city when they are relocating a facility like this. They send a letter to the city manager's office. He always refers those to the Planning Department, who prepares a response. Their general response is in direct response to that question about the availability of services. We always recommend that they relocate whatever facility they're relocating within the core area so that they can retain the services that are available in those areas.
And have, and have done so for many years.
Many years. And have actually, in the last five years, become much more clear in our response about the implications of moving outside of that service area. Once they receive that, we do not know what their response is to that. Sometimes we're unaware of what relocation activities they'll take until it's actually announced. So the Planning Department is involved in that response.
Okay. So do you think what's, what's playing out is they're just looking for inexpensive land, and then that's how, or that's just--
They have the same budget issues we have. A lot of them are financially-driven decisions.
Okay.
I have to agree that the different city-county health department, excuse me, one, one way they'll move into 63rd was a good deal. But another way, they did very poor planning when it comes to public transportation. Here it is. They use 73111 ZIP code to build this facility. But however, they did not place it in the areas that needed the most. So city-county health department and other entities have to do a better job when it comes to putting their facilities where it's needed the most. And so we look at the Social Security Administration, again, transportation. And him and I actually met last week, and that was one of the deals that we talked about, was how much was it going to cost to, to put a line there? And I actually had a conversation with the developer yesterday in regards to the public transportation. To me, if you are a government entity, you should look first at where the need needs to be. Also, you need to look at the public transportation. So here we are, going to, we are facing a dilemma of, should we, should the city pay for this bus line? Because $300,000 is a lot of money. And as we look at this study as well, the routes that may be eliminated is in Lloyd 7, the Green Pastures area. That's going to be a tough column. I'm just going to let you know, because that's the only, to some of those people out there, that's the only way they have to come into Oklahoma City. They pay taxes on us like everybody else. So we're going to have to be creative of, it may be, maybe we have to do a smaller bus to that area or a van. But public, some type of public transportation has to be out there because for, for some of those people out there, that's, that's it. But again, in regards to Social Security Administration and City-County Health Department, they have to do a better job when it comes to building new facilities. I think one of the first conversations they need to look at and have is public transportation. If you're talking about improving health, you need to, again, look at the areas that need it the most. And again, they, their new location is in with, within the 7311, but it's not in the neighborhood that needed the most.
I just want to pick up on what, another big-picture issue, and John talked about that people in those neighborhoods pay taxes like everybody else. But the fact is that Oklahoma is the only state in America that does not allow its cities to access property tax or income tax. So if they're paying property tax or income tax, none of that is going towards operations and maintenance of a bus system. We are disproportionately very dependent on sales tax. So if you live in an area and you look around, and there's not retail, enough, enough commercial activity that's generating sales tax, then your transit line is being heavily, heavily subsidized to go to that area. Because none of your property tax in this state is going to the city of Oklahoma City for its general fund. How many cities, how many cities in America with more than 500,000 people in those cities do not have a dedicated funding source or transit?
I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I can say that most do. But there are ones that do not.
I, I, can you--
Tim?
I don't know the number, actually. But I agree with Thomas. There are some, but most do, but there are still some that you don't.
My understanding, I thought from some of our previous discussions with Oklahoma City and Tulsa, were the only two cities with more than 500,000 people that did not have a dedicated funding source for transit. Certainly, almost all cities that side would have a regional transit authority and a dedicated funding source.
That's what's common. But I can't say with certainty that, like a city like Arlington, Texas, that has no transit system virtually at all, other than some more informal system. I believe that over half a million, that they have, not only that they not have dedicated funding, they don't have any transit either. They're commonly known as the largest system in, the largest city in America that does not have a transit system.
So how about if we break through, of cities that have a transit system that have more than 500,000, a large supermajority would have a dedicated funding source for transit?
That's correct.
Okay. So--
Very much a supermajority. I would say, I would, without having the numbers in front of me, I would hazard a guess that we're talking about plus 85%. I will say, however, that many of those are served by a separate transit authority that has taxing authority that's separate from the city. Lots of times that is created by virtue of creating this special tax, a special authority that's also then created to oversee the expenditure of that tax. So instead of it being a city function, it becomes this more regional or non-city function. That's quite common.
So it's a, it's a unique funding situation. You can't draw corollaries from other regional cities or even national cities because you don't have a regional transit authority, you don't have a dedicated funding source, and you have no access to property tax.
But at the same time, you know, let's take a city like Colorado Springs, which is, you know, and pretty much it's similar from, it's a big city, it's a fairly similar size to Oklahoma City, maybe a little bit smaller. It has a regional, a regional transit authority that collects a very small amount of sales tax. The idea behind that was to expand service into the suburban areas. 2008, the rest of the system was all done by city, a sales-tax-based city, you know, and when the economic turndown came, you know, much like right here, when your transit is competing with the fire department or the police department, you know, transit services are not as essential as the police and not as essential as the fire department. So even though they had a regional transit authority, they still cut their service by more than 50%, you know, as a result. So it's, even if you do have a larger city that has a regional funding source or a dedicated funding source, the real question is, is that funding source by in and of itself sufficient to cover the needs of the transit service? And that's another nuance of the question that you just asked. Because even if you do might have that, it might not be enough.
If I could make just a couple of comments. I think when we all called for this study, we were asked a couple of times whether or not we had the political courage to consider making some of these difficult changes. And I think, you know, we're now seeing that some of these discussions are going to be really complicated and are going to affect a lot of folks. But I so much appreciate you're taking this on, and I think you answered a lot of the questions that we asked you to take a look at, and from the depth of the study. And I think the information's terrific that was presented to us today. So thank you for that. You know, the words and the concepts of frequency and headway and, you know, just the thought of being able to have 15-minute routes on these important corridors, I think go really far in addressing the desire to increase our ridership. And I think that most of us around here, you know, would love to see that. If I interpret your numbers correctly, that our ridership per hour is 18 people.
Yes.
We've got buses all over the city that maybe have nobody in them, or maybe have one or two people in them. And I don't want to minimize the importance to those one or two people, but those numbers strike me as incredibly low. And as we look at, you know, being able to take the gifts that this city has, which would include a grid and would include some very obvious corridors, I think you've really gone a long way. So that's a lot of commentary, but I did want to ask a question in terms of budgeting. And within these three scenarios, and again, you know, we did specifically ask you to look at the budget-- look at the budget that we currently have, and so, you know, great work in trying to tackle some big adjustments within the dollars that we're currently spending, as I for one don't think we're spending those dollars very well at the moment. But have you put numbers to tier two and tier three of opportunity for us?
We created these in terms of hours, and then those were going to, were taken back and worked through the cost allocation model, and I don't know if we converted those into dollar amounts.
Yeah, we have, we have taken on their recommendations when you look at what's the cost of Sunday service and what's the cost of the frequency enhancements or the cost of running an extra three hours at night. We have put dollar cost to each of those. And just in a generalized sense, without getting into a lot of the detail, I mean, we go from roughly a million one, which is our least expensive alternative, to about $2.5 million for the higher-priced alternative.
You know, Rick, we've proven by adding, you know, as we did, adding frequency on a couple of routes, we've essentially documented that if you do that, you increase the ridership. I mean, I think we know that.
Yes, we've been very fortunate over the last several years when you've given us that incremental funding, and we have selectively chosen routes that we thought would be candidates to show increases, and we've certainly seen double-digit increases sometimes over a very short period of time. And we've always said, at least give us a year, if not two years, because you have to demonstrate that you're going to be out there before people sometimes will make that change. And we've certainly seen in every route that you have helped us fund that we've seen increases.
So, and I think the combined hybrid approach is one that probably works, too. If we can use some smaller vans or buses in some areas where we have some really specific pockets.
Yeah, the challenge that exists there, and I do need to speak to that because this is something I talk about from time to time, and I've certainly referenced it lately relative to the challenge that we're going to have in getting funding for buses, is the fact that because we are heavily dependent on the federal government to help us pay for buses, they do restrict the number that we can have. So sometimes, you know, we buy different-sized buses to try to balance the load. It's not as simple as taking a big bus off the street during the middle of the day if it's not as busy. We sometimes have to recognize that we've got to run that larger vehicle. And the reality is, when we're talking about a bus, now if you step down to a van, that's a different discussion. You're also talking about a significant ridership capacity change, but generally, think in terms of a 30-foot versus a 40-foot buses. The difference is really that 10 feet in the middle of the bus. It's the seats, it's not the expensive power source, the engine, the transmission, that sort of thing. So sometimes people are surprised that the cost savings is not as large as what you might anticipate, but when you look at it in that sense, that you're really just talking about taking seats out of a bus, you know, the savings isn't always there as high. So, but it is something that we definitely look at.
Well, I've actually, I'm thinking a little bit more of the van concept where we might be able to, and, you know, we're not going to solve any of these problems here, but given that they have broken ground on the Social Security Office, you know, maybe that's an interesting opportunity that you stop your bus route two miles away, but you use a van on a rotating basis and take folks there. I mean, I don't know, but there may be some opportunities for some of those kind of things.
When we were made aware of the Social Security Office, you know, we talked about, you know, there's a route that's within two miles, and not only does it have a cost implication of, you know, going those extra, you know, the deviating, but what it does is it messes up any connections that that route may have with anything else. So we looked at what are potentially some more cost-effective ways of serving something like that. And given what the potential volume of riders is out there, quite frankly, a taxi voucher program is going to be your least costly and least impact on the transit system core, you know, because not everybody goes to Social Security Office on an ongoing basis. You go once or twice a year, or you might go a little bit more often, but the average person does not go, it's not an everyday destination for most people. So trying to find a non-traditional, like a van or, you know, subsidized taxi service might be the better way to look at that. Or working cooperatively with, you know, a different transit agency that might go within a, you know, short distance of there might be another option.
Talking, talking to the developer yesterday, they did express interest of helping to pay for the additional cost, but there's not been an agreement so far, but they did express it. So hopefully, we'll be able to work something out.
Councilman White, you had a comment, a question?
I had a comment about a couple of things. One thing, Councilwoman Sawyer talked about the courage that we're going to have to have. I appreciate the fact that you were willing to list these additional resources scenario in order of priority. I mean, that, that, I mean, it would have been easy not to do that, just to list them. And I appreciate that you listed them in order that you think is the most important. But, go ahead, I didn't.
I just want to make clear that those are our priorities, and they may not reflect the community's priorities.
Absolutely. No, you made that very clear. You made that very clear. But I think just doing it that way makes it, because at some point in time, you have to figure out how you're going to pay for all this. And when you get down to that part, whether you want to get the most bang for your buck, and then you have to start bringing those other things. But I, just accept the compliment, I appreciate it. The second thing, though, with regard to this, the idea of if we have to go to a scenario where we, and it appears that we will have to, to really make any serious headway in this, we have to go to a scenario where we change the routes, where we eliminate some routes and add frequency to others. Have you looked at the impact of a delay in doing that, where you would notify people that this route is only going to be here for another six months or another year? Because a lot of, this is my own perception, a lot of transit-dependent people are not homeowners. A lot of times, they live where they live because they choose to live there. And if you, if they had, this is my own thought, is that they had a year to know that it wasn't going to change, then perhaps they would move to an area where they would be served because the impact of not having the ability to get around is obviously going to impact their lives greatly. And if, you have a thought on that? I'm preaching now, but.
It, you know, it's, I'm going to say that I've seen market research that suggests that's the case. A transit trip, however, depends on two different pieces. Not just the origin where somebody lives, but where that destination is. And I think the Social Security Office is a great example of what happens if you shrink the boundaries and yet where you want to go to, where your job is or gets transferred to, is no longer within those boundaries. So, you know, while the person could, in theory, move, it's very, it's expensive to move, and it's a tremendous inconvenience, especially if your transportation challenge in the first place. You have to also look, you know, are those destinations that those folks might be going to also within that shrunk area? I mean, we were, I'm going to say, very targeted and very conscious of, you know, looking at how to shrink the service effectively.
I was going to, I was cautioned to come up to the microphone to speak, so pardon my joining in here, but one of the other things that market research shows is that even if you tell people that their service is only going to be there for another six months, most people that are in that situation are either incapable of being able to make a move for any number of reasons, or they simply put it off, and the time comes. What happens, though, over time is that they will move to someplace else because some other thing, their job has moved, their church has moved, their grandmother has moved, you know, whatever it is that causes them to move. And the other people that are making location decisions then see where the transit system is, and they say, I want to locate on a bus route. But I can't tell you how many phone calls that I got working for an agency for a number of years from people who had just moved into the community, and they never gave their transportation a thought about where they were going to locate. So they locate someplace a mile away from the closest bus route, and the first phone call they make when they get settled in and are trying to figure out how they're going to run their lives is to the transit agency and say, I live in so-and-so, and when am I going to get a bus in my neighborhood? So it's one of those things that really is widely varied among the population, but typically we find that new, new folks moving in are probably more attuned to where the transit system is than folks who are displaced by changing the route structure.
That's good information, because that's the kind of thing that we're going to have to decide, you know, if it's not cost-effective to, or helpful to people that were going to be abandoned by the system to do it, then it wouldn't be, I mean, it's going to get down to how much it costs to do it at some point in time, and that's good information to have, I appreciate that.
In that regard, I think it's important that we have some public participation meetings, where we take this plan out to the public and have, get their input in it before we finalize the plan. I think we ought to make a real effort to publicize those and make sure that we get as many people there as possible.
A question. I appreciate your comments and your fairness of your study. Just from an overview, I come from a business perspective, and in business, you have a product or a service, and you attempt to grow the market, and you're always anticipating that your revenue that you get will be greater than the expenses or the cost of providing that service. In that context, is it a fair statement to say that there are very few, if any, public transit systems in the United States where the amount of money that's collected from the fare box pays for the system to be operated?
There is, there is no public transportation system in the country that recovers all of its costs from the fare box.
So as we go along here, there's going to have to be another source of funds to provide the type of service that we're talking about, and that, those type of funds would probably come in the area of increased taxes on everybody and/or greater subsidies from, like the federal government or these other sources. Is that a correct statement?
If, if one of the expansion scenarios is chosen, you know, to move forward with, then the revenues for that would have to come from someplace, yes.
Thank you. David, please.
Just a quick.
Thank you.
Just a quick question for clarification. Back on page four, where you're showing total annual ridership, could you make an estimate, if you divided that number, say, either by 300, which would give you a six-day ridership, or by 260, which would give you a five-day ridership, that we're serving approximately between 4,500 to 5,300 riders who, I mean, wouldn't most of the riders of the bus tend to use it more regularly, or are there very many people that use it once a year or something?
It depends. I mean, you have a hard, typically, and, you know, the, I don't recall from the onboard survey data seeing what the frequency of usage is, but if I were to guess in a system this size, that you'd have approximately, and these are, this is conjecture on my part, but based on similar systems elsewhere in the country that I've worked at, you know, about 30% to 40% of your users use the service five to six days a week, and you have a relatively, you know, 10% to 20% use it one day a week, or, you know, this is a very infrequent use, and everybody else is in between. It, the reason for that type of pattern is that you have work trips, which is, I think it was close to 50% of all folks using the service are, you know, are going to and from work. Those are regular users, but medical trips, you know, going shopping, things like that are not a daily trip type.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So it's going to be more difficult than this simple method of division to get to the number of people who tend to use the bus system on a regular basis, but it would seem to be somewhere between 4,500 to 10,000 people, possibly?
On a daily basis, and if you expand that to the folks, when you look at infrequent users versus frequent users, there's a lot more people than that who use the bus on a regular basis than 6,000 a day. I mean, it, the number of users is bigger than that, but the daily usage is, what, I'm not doing the.
Forty-five hundred, yeah.
Forty-five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do. I want to talk some more about stop spacing and our bus stops. And our default position has been this, to have a slow local system with very, now you mentioned that we, the reason that we have these bus stops so frequently is it's the lack of walkability. But isn't it also that we have a system in which advertisers can place a bus bench wherever they want, at their discretion, anywhere along our existing bus lines? And can you talk about, can you talk about that, but also what you would consider the ideal stop spacing? I think a standard rule would be that people would generally walk about a quarter mile or 400 meters. So are you, are you advocating on some of these local lines, 400 meter stop spacing or wider, or?
Let me start, let me start with the stop spacing, and then we'll talk a little bit about the infrastructure and the benches and that. You have to be careful, when you look at the average, the typical walk distance, the rule of thumb used in the transit industry is that folks will walk a quarter mile to access service. Or, you know, there's, there's been studies done that show, there's a curve that shows, you know, how far do you walk in order to access your service? And if you look at typical survey responses, and I think it, you know, it's, you know, two to three blocks is the difference. If you look from a stop spacing perspective on an arterial, you have to realize that most folks that come to a stop have already walked to get there from the neighborhood itself. So you have to, if you look at putting a stop every quarter mile on an arterial, then folks who are already walking in, you know, almost a quarter mile to get to the arterial would then have to walk further. So quarter-mile stop spacing is a little bit far for local services in an urban environment. You know, so the, you know, looking at what is a typical stop spacing in Oklahoma City? You know, if you were to look between two to three blocks would be the standard, you know, that I would be looking at, you know, taking, or, you know, taking a closer look at. In essence, pulling out a significant number of your existing stops because of the impacts it would have from an operational perspective, and drawing a balance between neighborhood access and speed and reliability and cost for the buses.
To put that in actual feet, that's like eight, 800 to 1,200 feet between stops to get us, I can't do that, even though I'm working in Canada right now, I can't do the meters conversion that quickly, but eight to 1,200 feet between stops would be about what we're talking about.
Well, I guess one question would be, do they all, do all the lines have to be homogeneous? Do they all have to be the same? And if you look at, like Los Angeles, which has higher, greater density, obviously, but is still trying to cover this enormous area, you've got, they're splitting it into rapid service.
Right.
Where you only stop every half mile or so, and you try and cover large amounts of ground, combined with local service that has smaller stop spacing and, and some things.
And the local stop spacing in Los Angeles within the city itself for the local service is about 800 to 1,200 feet. And then the metro rapids, like you say, their stop spacing is, they stop about every third stop, so it ends up being about every half mile in between, in between those. But they, they're both running very, very frequently. I mean, we're, we're talking about local routes that are running, some of them as close together as five minutes in the peaks, and the metro rapid is running five to 10 in between on some routes. And they, they go up, some of them are as high as 15 minutes in between, but they're, that's very, very intense transit to do that sort of thing.
But you, you could use a combination of different strategies.
Absolutely. There's some places that wider stop spacing makes a lot of sense. In most BRT, Bus Rapid Transit systems, it's commonly held that it makes a lot of sense to run wider stop spacing. And there isn't necessarily agreement on exactly what that is because it depends on the area that you're trying to serve, but typically, there are three-eighths of a mile, up to even as far as a mile, even 1.1 miles apart that stops are. So it depends on the area that you're trying to serve.
Would it be a recommendation that we end the practice of allowing advertisers to place benches anywhere along the routes that they, that they deem?
I want to let Rick talk about the specifics of how the mechanics of that work, but our recommendation is that COTB actively take into account a reasonable stop spacing that does not necessarily depend on any other factor than operating a good, efficient transit system. And that's really where our recommendation comes from. I'm going to let Rick talk about the mechanics of how things work with the advertiser.
But I think with the recent passage of the ordinance that changed our streets, street furniture, you know, we are now controlling where everything goes. I mean, it had to be on a bus route before, now it has to be much more specific than that. So where we, where we put stops, and we were interested in the results that would come out of this. I mean, we're having to transition from every block to longer distances now, just simply because it's almost impossible to maintain your schedule, which causes a reliability problem when we're, when we're offering those stops. But we did that previously for convenience and to try to develop ridership. Now we developed the ridership, and we need to move in a different direction, so.
We grandfathered them 1,400 to 1,500.
Well, we grandfathered them in, but we grandfathered them only in a sense that if they're there, they're there. But, you know, we'll be, we'll be dealing with each of those individuals. We certainly have the ability, the ordinance gave us the ability, that if we want to pull those, we can pull those.
What do you think about a system in which the advertiser places the bench on these 1,400, 1,500 different locations? They provide the maintenance, which in drought conditions might not be very much, but they provide the maintenance, and then they keep 100% of the advertising revenue. None of it goes to the. the advertising revenue. None of it goes to the transit agency. There's no transit maps or network maps on any of the bus stops. But can you speak to how common that scenario might be?
Yeah, that's pretty uncommon for that lower level of facility. Much more common is an arrangement where an advertiser actually builds a shelter that is lighted, that has a trash can, that has a bench inside, that has a place for the transit agency to post information, that's also lit at all times. The advertiser then, in exchange for being able to place advertising there, maintains it, they empty the trash, they make sure that the weeds and the grass around it, that's on a concrete pad, sometimes are even required to build sidewalk completion as part of the construction. And in return for that, they, placing the shelter and maintaining it to a certain standard, they're allowed to advertise, and there's no money that actually changes hands. That's not uncommon for that, for that level of amenity to be there. It is much more uncommon for the situation that's here, where the bus, where the advertiser keeps 100% of the revenue for a relatively simple bench that's out there. That's, that is quite uncommon. Most of the time, there's some amount that ends up coming back to the transit agency for that simple of a passenger amenity.
Can you, can you talk about signal optimization and maybe pushing data to people's smartphones in terms of GPS, where the buses are, how you might use signal optimization to increase speed of the line, and maybe also smart cards?
There, let me start with GPS. That is a technology that Metro is just now installing. I'm not sure exactly where you are, and there are a number of benefits that come along with that. One of the benefits is in terms of making the system more reliable, because it gives the people who are operating the system tremendous information about how long it's actually taking to get from one point to another, and you can actually build schedules that maintain a much higher degree of reliability. The other very large benefit is to the customers, because you can produce that information. There are many open-end, open-source developers now who have taken transit agencies' information, and at no cost to the transit agency, have built these entire networks that tell people where the buses are at any given time. So if I'm here, and I say I need to go to, we'll just say we're a few years down, I want to go to the airport, when's the next bus to the airport going? I can pick out my phone, pick it up, and pick up that information. And it's through the transit agency's investment in their geographic positioning system onboard the bus. But the software that I'm actually using and all that system is actually done by an open-end, a open-source developer at no cost to the agency, but it provides great information to the customer. That is becoming really the leading edge in terms of transit information technology, and is really one of the major benefits of having GPS onboard buses. Signal optimization. Signal optimization makes sense when you can, again, look at the causes of the lack of reliability on bus routes, and how much signal delay, how much of the delay in going down the street is actually caused by the signals versus other causes, like stopping every block and loading two people on the bus and continuing on, for instance. And at a certain point, it becomes cost-effective to put in an optimization routine that allows the vehicle approaching the intersection to let the controller, the intersection controller, know the bus is there, know that it's approaching, and it can then adapt its timing to minimize delay. Now, I want to make it clear that there are very few places, excuse me, in the U.S. today where it's like, many of you might be familiar with emergency equipment, where it immediately turns the light green for the emergency equipment. That's called preemption. Most of the time in transit, we're not using preemption, we're using signal optimization. So it'll look like if that, if the bus is approaching and the signal's red, the controller will say, let me go to the minimum amount of time I can serve other phases. It will actually even look if there's nobody in the left turn pocket, it may even skip the left turn phase, and it'll return the green back to the transit coach as soon as it possibly can. That's one form. Another form is if the bus is approaching, the signal's green, the system knows that the bus is there, it says, if I extend my green time for five seconds, I can get the bus to the intersection. So that's the other, that's the other form of signal optimization. None of these are horribly expensive. In fact, most of the controllers that are on the market today, the traffic signal controllers that are on the market today, already have that capability built into them. In terms of running that logic, what needs to happen is that you need to build the, a way for that signal controller to know the bus is there, so that it knows when to access that logic. And that's the expensive part of putting in traffic signal priority. Again, it's a matter of looking at where that makes a cost-effective investment. So you have to first understand what's causing delay in detail, to look at, if I make this investment, what can I expect to return out of it? Do I gain five seconds and a half an hour, or do I gain five minutes and a half an hour? And it's that kind of scale that we're talking about.
Would you use it all the time, or just on the 26% of the time that the buses are...
There are different, there are different theories about that. I am a proponent of using transit signal priority in what's called a passive sense, which means that it's always there, and you build the schedules, you adjust the schedules accordingly, as opposed to the complication of having to calculate whether the bus is running ahead or behind schedule, and then telling the controller and have it react at any given time. I'm much, much more of a proponent of being able to keep it optimal at all times and building the schedules according to the amount of optimization you can get out of the corridor. I will say that there are differing opinions on that in the industry, although I like to think mine is probably in the majority. But that's the, that is the reigning opinion. Smart cards. I would, I think that there needs to be a lot of introspection before the system looks at going to any kind of system that requires individuals to have bank accounts or to put large sums of money into something that is no longer liquid. One of the lessons learned in putting smart cards into Seattle, San Francisco, Los Angeles, to name three that I'm familiar with, is that people of lower income, the market penetration, if you will, of the smart card, the number of people who actually have them and carry them, I shouldn't mention Womata as well, Washington D.C., is quite low. And the reason it's quite low is most of these programs are designed to say, if you recharge your card with $50, then we'll give you a 10% discount. Or you can have this card, and you can get it automatically recharged, but you have to have a bank account that we can access automatically, or you have to have a credit card to establish this kind of an account. And what has been found fairly, unfortunately, is that the very people that could benefit the most are the most hesitant to do that, because they simply don't have the resources to dedicate to putting any amount of money into a smart card. I always characterize this as many of the folks that ride systems as low-income riders are often looking in the couch cushions every day for their bus fare. It's, so it's not something where I'm uncertain what tomorrow is going to bring, I'm literally living from hand to mouth, so my choice is, I put $10 into my smart card, and I can't buy milk for the kids. So they tend to want to be much more liquid, so their priority decision-making is literally day-to-day. And so the market penetration of higher-end fare collection is fairly low among low-income people. Is that a reason not to do it? No, but it's a reason to really step back and look at what the benefits are for the system, knowing that that's been the experience in many cities now.
David's got a question. I think it'd be the final question.
Thank you. Could you provide us with a list of publications or case studies that have been performed of cities similar to Oklahoma City that we could read over the next month, so we'll just be better prepared? And maybe not right now, but if you could put together a list of...
Can you say a little bit more about what your interest, specifically what you're interested in?
Yeah, especially looking at studies that have been performed of other cities, and hopefully some success stories where the studies were able to demonstrate an increase in ridership as a result of recommendations that, you know, were put into place. And even some, you know, I guess some negative case studies to where a lot of money and effort was put into trying to improve the transit system, and we didn't see any improvements. And I equate improvements to increase in ridership. Maybe there's other criteria that we need to look at. But I will say this, I like the idea. I mean, I fantasize about having a bus come close to my house out on 104th and South May and just get to ride to work, reading the paper and drinking coffee and not being concerned with the traffic myself. That is appealing to me. We currently don't have a system in place that would provide me with the consistency of times and other issues. So if we could improve it, I'd like to see it. But I would like to be better read in regards to situations where cities have taken an active, proactive approach to trying to improve their system and the results of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to ask one final question, it's very important.
Question.
Thank you. Thanks for your permission. Right. Okay. The, can you talk about, I mean, we've talked for how long, I mean, it sounds like a... We've talked about, for this length of time, and have not, and we've talked about the bus system in a vacuum without mentioning the streetcar, which is a major investment that obviously a lot of planning is going into. And I guess I would ask, can you talk about how the two, can you talk about how the two might...
I think you're looking off the park, but we're talking about a bus system today, not a streetcar. That's just a conversation.
This is one of the most underfunded, worst transit systems in America, and that we would cut this session short is incredible.
I'm not going to cut this, because this is... We've had these people up here for over an hour now.
My gosh.
And we've had several speeches being made from the horseshoe rather than questions asked. We could have saved a lot of time if we just only asked questions. We are cutting it in right now.
How would high-frequency downtown transit...
Thank you very much, I appreciate your effort to speak.
Unbelievable.
Thank you very much. We have representatives of the COTB. Is there any comments you all would like to make? Is there anybody from the audience who would like to address the council on any particular matter? Seeing young...